Aloha and Happy New Year, the Year of the Water Tiger to everybody. This is the Government Operations Committee of the Senate and today is Tuesday, February 1st at 3 o'clock PM. We are in Conference Room 16 with members of the committee and the public joining us remotely via video conference. I'm Sharon Moriwaki, Chair of the Committee, and joining me on Zoom is, I see Senator Gabbard. And we will, aloha, we will wait for other members as we proceed. Before proceeding with the hearing, I'd like to make a few housekeeping announcements. The hearing is being streamed live on YouTube. You can find links to viewing options for the Senate meetings on live and on-demand video page of the Legislature's website. And in the unlikely event that we encounter major technical difficulties during the hearing and must end it, the Committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding issues of our business on Thursday, February 3rd at 3 o'clock PM. Because of our recording, this hearing will be 90 minutes long. And to accommodate everyone who registered to testify remotely today, we will be limiting testimony to two minutes each. And all testimonies will be posted on the Legislature's website. And I see Senator Chang, another member of the Committee, has joined us, aloha. So let's move right into the bills. The first bill is Senate Bill 2378 relating to the Taxation Board of Reviews. And this adjusts the membership of the State Taxation Board Review and includes compensation, other board requirements. Testifying first up is the Director of Taxation, Isaac Choi.
Thank you, thank you Chair, members, Isaac Choi from Department of Taxation. Just a quick comment, time has come to have a paid border review. The cases are getting so complex and our voluntary board members are just really being overworked. So now is the time to, if we do have the funds, to have a full-time paid border review. And I strongly support this. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify, Chair.
Thank you. Is Budget and Finance Director, we have written comments from him. Is there anyone else on Zoom wishing to testify? Members, any questions of the Tax Director? Okay, hearing none, we'll move along to Senate Bill 2379. It's another tax bill. This is to allow the Special Enforcement Section of the Department of Taxation to examine any sector of Hawaii's economy and to refer and recommend cases to the Office of Audit and Field Audit Branches of the Department. Director Choi?
Thank you Chair, thank you for wanting to testify on this particular measure. Again, this particular measure just clarifies and expands the duties of the Special Enforcement Section. Again, the tax avoidance schemes are getting very, very sophisticated and we need this clarity. I also like to add to my testimony, if I can Chair, on page 2, lines 10. If we could delete with a stated priority of investigating cash-based businesses as defined in Section 231-93, you would add more clarity to the bill. So if we just delete that, everything after covert means. Thank you Chair.
So let me just repeat that, you're saying that on page 2, that the Special Enforcement Section would investigate reported or suspected violations of tax laws for civil enforcement purposes, including covert means, and deleting the rest of the sentence that follows of priority? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this bill? Okay, and we have no other testimony. Members, any questions of the Tax Director? Okay, thank you, Mr. Tax Director, we will move on. Senate Bill 2681 relating to procurement, allowing bidders to clarify or correct immaterial or technical information for up to 24 hours after the bid submission deadline. First up is Interim Director of State Procurement Office, Bonnie Kalkui. Bonnie?
Good afternoon, Chair Moriwaki, Vice Chair Dela Cruz, and members of the Committee. Bonnie Kalkui for the State Procurement Office. We stand on our written testimony with comments.
Thank you. Next is the Comptroller or his designee, Kurt Utaguro. Oh, there he is.
Hi, good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair and members of the Committee, Kurt Utaguro, State Comptroller. The Department of Accounting and General Services stands on its written testimony in opposition to this bill. My staff and I are happy to answer any questions the Committee may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, General Contractors Association, Ryan Sakuda.
Good afternoon, Chair Moriwaki, Vice Chair Dela Cruz, and members of the Committee. The GCA would just like to add some additional comments that's not in our written testimony. Dads in the State Procurement Office are correct in that the law currently allows this under admin rules and the HRS allows it. If the acceptance is in the best interest of the state and the value of the work to be performed is equal to or less than 1% of the total bid amount. However, there's a clear distinction with what's currently allowed and the proposed measure. Distinction is that currently the Chief Procurement Officer of the various agencies has the sole discretion to allow these technical amendments. In other words, they can choose which bids will be allowed to be amended or not. So this bill isn't in line with the spirit of the law to allow typos to be corrected, but takes it a step further by eliminating the subjectivity slash discretion to avoid any appearance of impropriety. So we think it's a black and white issue. If there's a clear typo, you should be allowed to amend it. This type of immaterial correction should not be left up to discretion that potentially be the cause of protest. I think that all the stakeholders here can agree that the sub-list requirements is the number one source of bid protest. And we all know the definition of insanity. The private industry looks at California's procurement code as a model, and this is what they've implemented. This is also a recommendation that was given to the State Procurement Office by an independent study. And this is actually the first time in a decade of what we're dealing with this issue that the generals and subs have compromised in the intent of this bill. And to appease any concerns, GCA is open to suggested sunset of two years as well. For these reasons, we hope the Committee continues this discussion and moves the measure. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sakuda. Next up is the Subcontractors Association, Tim Lyons. I see you, yes, hi, aloha. Could you unmute yourself?
Okay, I can do that amazingly. Aloha. The Subcontractors Association is composed of nine separate subcontracting organizations. It's taken a great deal, but we actually think that the language in this bill tends to work towards a solution of what the general contractors say is an insufficient amount of time as they put their bids together to check over the information. We're not sure we subscribe to that theory, but because we think anytime a company submits a bid, they ought to check the accuracy. However, with the parameters that are specified in this bill and in the spirit of cooperation, we can support the intent. We do ask for one minor stylistic change, which is in our testimony. This doesn't change any of the words, it reorganizes it, so it's more clear that the nature and scope are also something that you can't play around with. Most important is that we are asking for a two-year sunset clause. This is an extremely important area to the financial health of subcontractors. And we enter into it cautiously, but as I said, with the spirit of cooperation. So as a sort of trial run, we would like to see at least a two-year sunset clause, just to be sure. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. Next, Jeffrey Masatsugu from the Painters.
Good afternoon Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, my name is Jeff Masatsugu and I'm here on behalf of four labor management operation funds. The Painters, the Drywall Tapers, Glazers, and the Carpet and Soft Tileers. Chair, we're in opposition to this bill. You have our written testimony, I don't want to read. I just want to emphasize that this measure will be creating two separate statutory bases for bid changes. For this measure, because it can already be done under the existing law, as I indicated in my written testimony, and as has been acknowledged by GCA. To the extent that the GCA has a concern that the CPO has sold discretion over whether or not to allow the change, we submit that there has been no indication of how significant this problem is by the GCA. We don't know how often this occurs. We don't know if it's a significant enough problem to warrant a statutory change. Perhaps this could be or should be done at the administrative level. And there's no indication why the CPO should not be the one with the discretion to decide whether or not to allow the change. You know, as far as a sunset clause, again, we would prefer to see that this measure not be adopted at all. We think this will only create more confusion. And we think that when we create more confusion in the procurement process, you may actually increase the number of bid protests you get. After all, there are going to be two separate statutory sections, again, that would allow the changing of bids. So again, we think it'll create chaos and confusion, and we ask you to further this measure indefinitely. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other testifiers on Zoom? Oh, I see Director Buthai, Department of Transportation.
Good afternoon, Chair Moriwaki, Vice Chair Dela Cruz, and members of the Committee, Jay Buthai for DOT. We stand on our testimony, offering comments and proposing language to the meaning of immaterial or technical information. Thank you.
Okay, I do have written testimony from the Electrical Contractors Association in support. Also, asking for a two-year sunset. We have the PAMCA with comments, the City and County of Honolulu in opposition, and Ralph Inouye, General Contractors, in opposition. Oh, in support, I'm sorry, in support. Okay, any questions of any of those testifiers on Zoom? Members? I do, SBO Bonnie Kalkui. Are you still there? Oh yeah, Bonnie, yes, hi. On your testimony, you do mention what some of the others, the GCA mentioned, that the rules currently do provide for immaterial information and technical information where errors could be corrected. But can you respond to the GCA comment, Mr. Sakuda, talking about why the CPO would not give a fair hearing? And whether we need to have this in the law?
Thank you Senator. First of all, I need to make a correction. It's not the CPO that has the discretion, it's the procurement officer. And in response to GCA, I've not heard of an instance where the procurement officer did not make an accommodation for minor errors. So I'm not real sure, you know, where that's coming. I personally don't have that knowledge, so. It would be interesting to find out exactly what it is that is not being allowed, the minor corrections are not being allowed.
So the language that you're referring to in the rules specifically states that it's for missing signatures, typo, and arithmetical errors, or other mistakes in minor informality that doesn't affect price, quantity, delivery, or contractual conditions. You're saying that that's specific enough where there will not be the subjectivity?
Well, the administrative rules 3-12231 specifically says mistake can be made after the deadline for receipt of awards prior to award may be done, and it lists those areas that can be corrected. And it further goes on to say, as proposed in my, or as stated in my testimony, that the procurement officer can allow other mistakes if it's in the best interest of the state or the purchasing agency, and is fair to other bidders. So what would not be fair to the other bidders? What would not be for them to do that in the best interest of the state would be my question back to GCA.
So it does require or allow for a 24-hour period where it can be those minor errors corrected?
It's not, it doesn't have a specific time period, in fact. It actually allows the procurement officer to make those waivers when it's discovered, when the bidder, you know, brings it up to their attention that it could possibly be a mistake. Or even the agency can bring it to their attention, saying, you know, something looks off there. So they may ask them to correct that if it's just a minor error. As long as the mistake is minor and doesn't affect the price or quantity or delivery within the contractual terms.
So it does go to you as the Chief Procurement Officer for the State Executive Branch?
No, it's left at the Department, it's the procurement officer for that particular solicitation.
Where it goes to the departments?
Procurement Officer.
May I go back to the Painters? So you were in, you were saying that you did not want to have this change? Or are you?
Yes, Chair, we think the change is completely unnecessary, and we actually think it's going to be.
Have you used the rules for any errors? Or have you had any experience with the errors using the rules?
You know, I'm not aware of any of our contractors having any problems with the.
Okay, thank you. Going to General Contractors Association. Brian, so can you give us an example of where it has been a problem? And address what our SBO is saying is not a problem?
Yeah, you know, I apologize, I had asked three general contractors who are familiar, more familiar with this, to see if they could actually be able to testify here today. Unfortunately, all three were tied up, so I can get you those kind of examples after the meeting is shared with the Committee. But mainly what we're seeing is just in overall, you see 45% of construction protests are on the subcontractor listing. So we're just trying to clean things up here to make sure that in the spirit of the law, this is what's allowed. Let's clarify this to allow it, and it's not something far-fetched, it's not coming from Bethfield, this is what California does. And it's even been recommended to the State Procurement Office in the independent report that was submitted, I want to say, two years ago.
So if we look at the rule, and the rule is in HHR, and we took that language, which is really specific, so if there's no, let's say, quote, "subjectivity," or is less "subjectivity", if we were to look at that, if we use that language in the law, and we pointed to missing signatures, typos, and arithmetical errors, or other mistakes, and a minor informality, and we took that language, we could add it to the law if that would be clearer and less, quote, "subjective."
Yeah, we just asked that it should not be like where it's, the procurement officer may allow it. You should be allowed to do it, if that's the spirit and the intent of the law, you should just be allowed to do it.
Okay. And giving them the 24-hour period, and we'll put that into, okay. And back to Mr. Lyons, so you're saying that you just want some stylistic change in terms of having the prohibition against expanding the nature and scope of the work? Is Tim still on?
Yeah, someone.
Yeah, but you're okay with the specific language being added as the?
Use the language from the administrative rules, we're probably okay. We would however like to have that additional language that we pointed out in our testimony to specifically reference the fact that there shouldn't be any additions or substitutions of joint, sub-joint subcontractors.
Okay, thank you.
Which is also, that's part of our language that we submitted, but I think the administrative rules should incorporate that to make it clear.
Okay, well, we're going to just concentrate on the law today. Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to move along to the next bill, which is SB 3369, relating to procurement of, this is establishing a procurement services consolidation working group to develop a plan for the phase consolidation of all state executive branch departments except for DOE, UH, and the health systems. First up is Comptroller Utaguro.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair Moriwaki, members of the Committee. Department of Accounting and General Services stands on its written testimony in support of the intent and offer a few comments to the Committee for consideration. We're happy to answer any questions the Committee may have. Thank you.
Thank you. State Procurement Office Administrator Bonnie Kalkui.
Good afternoon again, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Committee. The State Procurement Office appreciates the intent of the bill and we provided comments.
Thank you. And we have comments, written comments from Budget and Finance Chair Greg Heirai. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay. Moving along then to the next bill, which is SB 2726 relating to parking concessions, exempts parking concessions from the public bidding requirement. I see Megan Stats from Department of Land and Natural Resources on, oh, and Ed Underwood, I did see you. So Ed, are you testifying?
Yes, Chair.
Administrator Ed Underwood for DOBOR.
Good afternoon, Chair Moriwaki, Vice Chair Dela Cruz, and Committee members. Ed Underwood Administrator for the Division of Boating and Ocean Recreation. The Department stands in strong support of this measure, and we're here to answer any questions the Committee may have.
Okay, we have the city in written, or any other testifiers on Zoom? Okay, we have the City and County of Honolulu in opposition, written testimony, and that is it. Any questions of Mr. Underwood, members? Hearing none, we will move along. Thank you. SB 3282 relating to government records allows the comptroller to direct the transfer of records and management of records through the State Record Center and appropriates funds to the archives, to Hawaii State Archives, to support the management and storage of state records. I see Adam Jensen, Dr. Jensen, aloha.
Aloha.
I see the comptroller here, is the comptroller testifying?
I defer to my boss.
Mr. Comptroller.
But thank you Chair, and Vice Chair, and Committee members. Obviously, Adam and I have, Dr. Jensen and I have sterling and total support of the bill and happy to answer any questions that we may have. We think it's a very important initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, and appreciate your doing something about all of the records that I saw in many, many buildings. So Dr. Jensen, would you like to say a few words about this bill?
Yes, thank you. And as you've alluded to, there are lots of records in many, many state office buildings that are very expensive to store. We can store those records for as long as they're legally required at approximately one-fifth the cost. And the more important aspect to that is we can also ensure that they're destroyed once they have exceeded that legal retention, so we're not keeping them for days, months, years, decades afterwards. So we feel very strongly that this is in the public's best interest for ensuring that the records are kept, and then also ensuring that they are efficiently and effectively destroyed when legally allowed. And by providing the comptroller the ability to designate when they should be transferred and a driver to facilitate that transfer, we feel very strongly that we can more efficiently manage records and where they're being stored, i.e. get them out of office space and get them into bulk storage. Thank you.
Thank you, that is music to my ears. And I think for many, many departments, I saw boxes that said "to storage", and they were sitting on people's desks and on the floor. So this appropriation will also help not only managing the documents, but also transporting them as well?
That is correct, because the big limitation that we have seen is that the agencies do not have a position that has position description functionality to do transportation, and then they don't have a vehicle to do it either. So we are willing to take that operation on, as is the case at many, many other state archives. They have a driver to do this for that exact same reason. And we also want to take the opportunity to include the neighbor islands. They should also be able to take advantage of this, and for the first time in our history, be able to facilitate container shipment from the neighbor islands to the record center.
Okay, thank you. Members, thank you. Members, any questions of Dr. Jensen or the comptroller? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Going on to SB 3284 relating to Information Technology Services, which establishes a technology services consolidation working group to develop a plan for the phase consolidation of all state executive branch information technology services. And again, it excludes DOE and the UH and the health systems. So I see, who is representing the OETS?
Aloha Chair Moriwaki, this is Todd Mora.
Oh, hi Todd.
Hi. Hi, good afternoon, Todd Mora, IT Governance Officer for ETS. And again, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair Dela Cruz, and members of Committee. ETS, we respectfully stand on our testimony and are available to answer any questions for the bill.
Okay, thank you. Next up is DOT Highways, Director Buthai.
Aloha Chair, we stand on our testimony, offering comments. Thank you.
And I have anyone else on Zoom here to testify on this bill? I have comments from DLNR, and I have written support from Christine Sakuda from Transform Hawaii Government. Any questions, members? Okay, well, we'll move along then to, oh, one question I do have is, and maybe it's it's the question of what is the executive branch departments, but I think we missed excluding OHA. OHA is not part of the group, right? The executive branch would be, you do serve all the executive branch departments except for OHA, DOE, and UH, is that correct, Todd?
Yes, and DOE, UH, historically, they've had their own services and do their own operations. Also with the HHSC too as well, but for the most part, everybody else we work with, yes, that's correct.
And OHA, yeah, you don't serve OHA?
Yeah, we do not, yeah, although we do talk with him, collaborate with him.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, moving along then, thank you very much. Moving along to SB 2683 relating to Hawaii Community Development Authority, which replaces the county councils with the state legislature as a nominating authority for members. as a nominating authority for members of the authority. I see Executive Director Deepak Nuppani.
Thank you, Chair Murawaki, Vice Chair Dela Cruz, and members of the committee. We are providing comments on the Senate Bill twenty-six-eighty-three. We note that there are three other measures that are introduced in this session. Senate Bill twenty-three-ninety-eight, Senate Bill thirty-two-twenty-four, and House Bill eighteen-twenty-seven related to Palayi Community Development District, that also amend the composition of the authority. So we are providing language, suggesting, respectfully suggesting language in this bill to be amended so that all four bills are going to have consistent language. And we have provided the language in my testimony.
Okay, thank you. So your amendments are in, in conformity with other three bills? So whichever, all the bills passed, they're all aligned?
That, that, that was the intent, if the, if the languages are different in different bills, then we'll, we'll have some challenges at the back end.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you very much. Is there anyone else to testify on this bill? Okay, seeing none, do we have anyone else? No written testimony. Okay, any questions, members of Mr. Nuppani? Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we've, we're done with all our bills. The chair will call for recess and return for decision-making. We are reconvening the three o'clock hearing of the Government Operations Committee for decision-making. Let me know that any bill passing out will include the necessary technical non-substantive amendments. So going into two-three-seven-eight relating to the Taxation Board of Reviews, the chair's recommendation is to pass as is. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Dela Cruz?
Just clarifying. If you're going to do technical amendments, you need to pass with amendments.
Hello?
You still pass with amendments?
Because?
It's going to be technical amendments, if anything.
Yeah, so you cannot pass as is if there's technical amendments.
Oh, this one doesn't have one, though.
Okay, okay.
Yes, okay, sorry, yeah. Okay, so Vice Chair Dela Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Chang?
Aye.
Senator Gabbert?
Aye.
Senator Favella? What was that?
Reservations.
Okay, the recommendation is adopted. Next. Next bill is Senate Bill two-three-seven-nine relating to the Special Enforcement Section, allowing them to examine any sector of Hawaii's economy. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments to clarify that the Special Enforcement Section has authority to investigate all reported, investigate, or suspected violations, and taking the director's recommendation to delete a section of the bill in lines ten to eleven on page two. Members, discussion, questions? If not, the chair votes aye. Vice Chair Dela Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Chang?
Aye.
Senator Gabbert?
Aye.
Thank you. Senator Favella?
Reservations.
Okay, four ayes, recommendation is adopted. Next bill is Senate Bill two-six-eight-one relating to procurement. And this is correcting immaterial technical information. The chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments to clarify that the revision is only immaterial technical error as specified in the administrative rules. So we'll take that administrative rule, specific language, and place it in, in this bill. Prohibit any change to scope of work at the subcontractor list using the stylistic recommendation of the Subcontractors Association, and include a two-year sunset provision, and also defect the effective date for further discussion. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair of Dela Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Chang?
Aye.
Senator Gabbert?
Aye.
Senator Favella?
Reservation.
Four ayes, the recommendation is adopted. Next bill?
I think it's five ayes. Because reservation is a aye.
Oh, sorry, sorry, okay, five ayes. Thank you for the correction. Next bill is Senate Bill three-three-six-nine relating to procurement, establishing procurement services consolidation working group to develop a plan for the consolidation of all state executive branch procurement services. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments to exclude the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, and also to dissolve the working group, extend that date to June thirty, twenty-twenty-four. Members, questions, discussion? Okay. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair of Dela Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Chang?
Aye.
Senator Gabbert?
Aye.
Senator Favella?
Aye.
Five ayes, the recommendation is adopted. Senate Bill two-seven-two-six relating to parking concessions, exempting the parking concessions from public bidding. Chair's recommendation is to pass with minor edits for clarity and accuracy. The chair's recommendation, oh, the chair votes aye. Vice Chair Dela Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Chang?
Aye.
Senator Gabbert?
Aye.
Senator Favella?
Reservations.
Okay, five ayes, recommendation is adopted. Senate Bill three-two-eight-two relating to government records, allowing the comptroller to direct and transfer and storage of records with appropriation. Chair's recommendation is to pass as is. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Dela Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Chang?
Aye.
Senator Gabbert?
Aye.
Senator Favella?
Reservations.
Five ayes, the recommendation is adopted. Senate Bill three-two-eight-four relating to information technology services establishes a technology services consolidation working group to develop the plan for the phase consolidation of all state executive branch services. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments to exclude the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Questions, members, discussion? Chair's, Jared votes aye. Vice Chair Dela Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Chang?
Aye.
Senator Gabbert?
Aye.
Senator Favella?
Aye.
Five ayes, recommendation is adopted. And the last bill, Senate Bill two-six-eight-three relating to the Hawaii Community Development Authority, removing this county council as a nominating authority and replacing it with the state legislature. The chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments recommended by the H C D A to replace the language in the current bill. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Dela Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Chang?
Aye.
Senator Gabbert?
Aye.
Senator Favella?
Reservations.
Five ayes, the recommendation is adopted. Thank you, members, public. This concludes the Government Operations Committee hearing. Aloha.